All right, if everyone would please stand and join us for the Project Leaders.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. And now I will call our regular school board meeting for independent school district number 544 to order. And the first item of business then is to establish our quorum, so I will turn to the clerk. Kirby Anderson.
Here.
Natalie Knudsen.
Here.
Melanie Cole.
Present.
Matthew Lemke.
Here.
Missy Hermes here. And Stephen Biggus though.
Here.
We have a quorum. All right, thank you very much. We have an agenda that's been slightly modified from the one which was emailed out last week, and so I would look for an agenda approval with the modifications.
So, I'll second.
Okay, so we have Matt for the motion and then Kirby for second. Any discussion on the agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The agenda is approved, and we will move right into reports from our principals, beginning with Principal Scott Kolbeck, elementary principal for Adams and McKinley.
I'm glad you figured out we had a new podium.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Thank you. And clarification, I'm not trying to go techie on all of you, but I did print out what I was going to speak about tonight, but in my haste to leave Adams School today, it's sitting on the printer. And then also, I just want you to know, the reason I was in such a hurry to leave Adams today is I needed to run home and get my grill, get it to the tennis courts, grill hot dogs for all of the spectators of the tennis meet that's going on right now. Let me catch my breath. And then when I'm done here, I'm going to be exiting quickly to get back down there. There's more hot dogs to be grilled, so what a beautiful night to have a grill out for the girls' tennis team. So math testing started today at McKinley and Adams. We test our students in the areas of reading and math in the fall, winter, and spring. And a special thank you to Rhonda Ma. Rhonda is one of the four people who work in our tech office. And sadly, we had an unexpected retirement over the weekend. And you'll act on that later in your meeting, but we will very much miss Amy Hopper at McKinley School. She's been a fabulous employee. She's also been our proctor for math testing, and so Rhonda Ma from our tech department was able to be at McKinley today and helped us get off on the right foot, so thank you to her. And then also a special thank you to Andrea Knit. She proctors the math testing at Adams School, and for the first time, we are testing without a computer lab. So Andrea has been going into every classroom and using our Chromebooks from the Chromebook carts, and that's been a new experience, but it went well, so I wanted to just thank the two of those people. Last Friday, we sent home some letters to families about upcoming parent-teacher conferences. Conferences are coming up October 14th, 15th, and 18th. And this year, our families will have an opportunity to conference virtually with their child's teacher or face-to-face. So our families should have found, families of kids in grades K through 2 should have found those parent-teacher conference letters in their child's take-home folder on Friday. Last Monday, a week ago today, we had some excitement at McKinley School. It was the 10th day of school. So the incoming kindergarten class had a chance to meet a superhero. He handed out the superpower of follow directions the first time. And I believe the superpower on the 20th day of school will be no blurting.
What?
So we have some fun with that. And then I wanted to mention on Friday night, I came to Otter Friday Night. I don't know how many nights, how many years we've had Otter Friday Night, but just thank you to school board member Matt Lemke. I know that's kind of your baby, and you started that many years ago, but that's just a lot of fun. And it was so well-attended, I noticed that very, very late into the evening, I believe, that they might have even run out of food, which is a that's a good thing. I don't look at that as a bad thing. So that was very well-attended, and what a beautiful night for Otter Friday Night. Last week, I attended a parent-teacher organization meeting. And I'm, we're just so thankful for our very active PTO who raises such good dollars for our K through 4 classrooms and students. Our parent-teacher organization gifted each teacher in grades K through 4 with $200 to start the school year to go into their classroom supply budget. When we did the math, I think it was over $14,000, and that was handed out in total. Just quickly, our bus transfer sites for the second consecutive year now, we have, I call them mini-bus transfer sites. We have them at each of our elementary schools plus Kennedy's, so instead of having 20 buses show up here in the morning, we have five buses show up to each school. It's just a quieter, calmer start to the day. And we tried that last year due to COVID, and we thought, hey, we're onto a good thing. Let's just keep doing this for years to come. Fire drills, we had our first fire drills last week. I think about a five drill at McKinley. It was their first of 65 fire drills as they enter their 13 years with us in grades K through 12, five fire drills per year. They did a good job with that. Speaking of our youngest students, we've also noticed that they've done a nice job of when we compare this year's group to last year's group, and I think there's a reason for this, but this year's group seems to be doing a better job of going around to the playground, getting through the lunch line, finding their buses over here at the end of the day. And I think the reason for that is last spring, they were in preschool for March, April, and May. But last year's kindergartners, this year's first graders, their preschool year was cut short by three months, and we think that we're noticing a difference then with that. Lastly, I just want to mention that our outdoor recess program at Adams School started today. That's called JAWS. It stands for Jogging and Walking Students. Thank you to Mr. Meyer, our FIAD teacher, and also our cross-country coach for heading that thing up. We have a parent volunteer, a different parent volunteer, to come and spend time on the Adams Playground each afternoon, each recess for about an hour and a half. We've had some kids run almost two miles during recess today. 14 laps around the perimeter of the Adams Playground is two miles. We had some kids finish 13 laps, so one-seventh of a mile short of a second mile. So all in all, a good start, and I guess I'll entertain any questions from the board.
You're none, I guess you're free to grill some hot dogs.
Thank you.
I mean, we could have all been ransomed.
And I think I'll skew at 6 o'clock then in the auditorium.
Great, thank you. All right, and now we'll hear from Ms. Tindy Run, our elementary principal at Cleveland.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Today marks the 15th day of the school year already, and the month of September has just flown by. We're kind of getting ready to welcome in October here on Friday. But looking back at some September activities, our third graders at Cleveland are quickly introduced to the accelerated reading program, which is intended to be a motivational program for them to read lots at their individual, any kind of reading levels. And so they've been busy checking out books in the library and getting those read and taking AR tests, and so there's been a lot of chatter and excitement regarding that program. And then also, last Thursday and Friday, our third grade classes took their first field trip to Prairie Williams Learning Center. We had two beautiful days. And last year, we tried to do those visits virtually, and it was quite cumbersome. Both sides of the group, they're the partnership, found it kind of challenging. They stuck with it, but they're grateful to be able to go to Prairie in person. The U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service has some additional guidelines that they need to uphold according to their regional office, which limits the numbers, the number of parent volunteers that can join the class for the activity. Or, you know, leaving off the bus, one group needs to go one direction, the other the other direction, so we, there was a lot of communication regarding that. But the visits went well, and we're looking forward to the next one early in October. And then, fourth graders, well, as we speak, fourth grade orchestra roundup is taking place at Cleveland, and it was a hopping place over there on both parking lots, and the hallways were filled. I had a chance to just catch up with Mr. Craig Peterson and Ms. Belle Johnson, and they shared with me that there are at least 105 students already pre-registered and a couple of others that were walking in the door, so they're, you know, they're doing a remarkable job. There were a couple different vendor companies set up in the Cleveland Gym tonight, so that families can rent an instrument or the like, so lots have a first lesson, get their instruments marked. There were good things happening over there. Last year, they too figured out how to do this orchestra roundup night virtually, and so that was very interesting. But their first concert is on the calendar for December 16th, which is a fast three months away, so they're going to have 10 rehearsals between now and their first concert, along with some lessons. And historically speaking, it's kind of amazing how they really learn so much during those first few months and come together and make a great sound, so we're looking forward to that. And then our teacher interventionists with the RTI program and Title program carried out the universal screening the first weekend or two at the school year, and have gathered all of that data and put it on spreadsheets. So we spent some quality time with those RTI people and teachers and our Title 1 staff, looking at all of the student data and identifying students who would really benefit from reading or math intervention, and then how we could best serve them between those two programs. Thereafter, schedules were developed, given their homeroom class schedule, and that instruction started today. So it's been a good process. They worked diligently and efficiently, and then work around student schedules to provide that, so that's very exciting. We continue to, we will continue to administer the STAR reading and math assessments periodically throughout the school year, so that we that's our frequent progress monitoring, that we are able to do more frequently than we have scheduled if need be. So it's a good measure that we use. And then September, September is the month where we promote and practice safety. I always want to say thank you to our FIAD teachers for providing that annual bus safety. They do that during the FIAD class, answer questions, watch a video, and talk through, talk through all of the reasons we need to uphold bus safety and how we count on our bus drivers to keep their eyes on the road and drive us from place to place safely, and what our jobs are as passengers on the buses to add to the safety. And then, as Mr. Kolbeck mentioned too, we've been practicing fire drills, those safety, other safety drills that we build in, and we'll do that frequently here. We're always blessed to have some beautiful fall weather to have that break outside, so to speak, so. And then also too, I wanted to just reiterate, or maybe I forget that name. Emphasize, reiterate, that last Friday, students brought home information regarding parent-teacher conferences. They're coming up a little sooner in October, then they're coming up in October sooner than they typically have been. Elementary teachers are grateful for this, having that opportunity early to connect with the families, explain some programs, expectations, and at that time, parents of third and fourth grade students will also receive the MCA scores from last fall or last spring. And on that, I will come over to answer any questions.
If anyone has any questions? Thank you. Now looking for a report from Ivan Hurst, our middle school principal.
Good evening. I think Mark and I noticed at the last board meeting that everyone seemed real interested in the enrollment numbers, so I think we have those ready for you tonight. Grade 5, 160. Grade 6, 217. Grade 7, 214. And grade 8, 201. And I pulled that just prior to the meeting here today. So a number of things, that's a total of 792, if you didn't already have that up in your head. A number of redundancy with Scott and Tindy's reports. Our RTI screening is also being completed. We have schedules for our students that need extra support in both reading and math with Chad Kep and Eddie Shaw, and those programs are intended to give kids a boost in areas where they need it, so they get a cut score, and then those kids get that extra support. Parent-teacher conferences, letters also went out last week in grades 5 through 8. A couple of things that I picked out over the last month, we've enjoyed a great start to the school year. We held our class meetings, which is an important time where we set the expectation for the school year. Even though one meeting isn't enough to go through the whole year, we will have other class meetings, but we set the expectation of respect and kindness and support to all of our students. A lot of times, there's kids that are afraid to ask for help, and that's what we're here to do, is to help them, and really all adults in this building. We also addressed the importance of strong attendance and being involved in extracurricular activities. I asked them, what do you do? So what defines you or what makes you you? And grades 5 through 8, more often than not, will see a video game or something, or Snapchat, and we do a little bit more than that. So we will have other class meetings over here to reemphasize some of the important points for us. We, Mr. Steinbrenner, have I, we've addressed the hotspots with student behavior in our building, primarily known as the lunchroom, with supervision either during lunch, before and after school, so we've been hitting those areas hard and really having a really strong presence there through all of those times that just when kids have a lot of extra freedom. We met in our PLCs middle of last week. As you know, we have a number of initiatives going, and I'm sure Mr. Drake will talk about this as well, but the primary one that we talked about was project-based learning. And I attended the math PLC, and we had some really constructive discussion surrounding our PLC, surrounding our PBLs. And as we continue to move that forward, we'll have to answer some more questions and just make sure that we're being supportive of our teachers as we do the right work. The other initiative that we've been spending time on is social-emotional learning. We reminded the staff that we are, they are the students throughout this fall with social-emotional learning, so to be present and to be engaged when we have those opportunities. We have the honor retreat, where we did a number of activities. I won't go into too much detail. And then our middle school staff meetings, we really hit on the importance of relationships and being present with our kids, getting to know what makes them tick. All those things are really important so that kids learn. They won't learn just because you present it for them. A number of them won't. They need to have a reason why they should learn it. And relationships are that reason. That's all I have on the list. We've been doing a lot of really great work. It's been, it's been a really enjoyable experience for me to work with so many good teachers and support staff. I think in our society, we don't say thank you enough, but I really felt really impressed and thankful for so many people in our building. I would hate to start a list right now, so please don't let me.
Any questions for Principal Herbst? Thank you, thank you for the presentation. And Principal Mark Anderson for the high school category of our students. How are you?
I'm great. It's been a great first three weeks. Also, I have information on the ALC and IQ Academy for Kristen and Ryan. I'll also start with the enrollment. Our enrollment is up at the high school. We have 200 ninth graders, 182 10th graders, 172 11th graders, and 153 seniors. We're a total of 703 students. Our ALC has six ninth graders, 21 10th graders, 11, 11, or seven 11th graders, and 30 seniors, which we have 84 kids. Those numbers fluctuate. Many of them do not come back to the high school, but we do have kids that go over the way forward and graduate halfway through the year. I talked with Ryan Johnson today about the IQ Academy. Our numbers as of Friday, we had 75 students in ninth grade, 53 in 10th grade, 11th and, or 58 in 11th, 72 in 12th grade, for a total of 258. He told me that we have 67 current high school students at KSS that take at least one or more classes over there, but also take courses here at the high school. That was part of their schedule last year before we left for the spring, for a total of 95 courses total, so he's done a good job working with those students. He's been in the media center, making sure they get in, make sure they're taking care of their work, and if they're not in, then starting to work after two weeks, we talked about coming back to the high school. Some of the things we're doing at the high school, we took the first two weeks to really slow down. High school students hadn't been in the building five days a week, two days, three days, changes in schedule. So the staff and I really worked hard with Shane to do social-emotional learning with them as a staff. And so the staff spent the first two days doing social-emotional activities with the kids in class. In the first two weeks, we didn't give any homework. We worked on building those relationships, building their stamina throughout the school day, practicing what it meant to be a student, how to turn work in, where to turn it into, either online or in person. The college kids did have some homework in week two. They had some expectations that we have to meet for the college. We limited it to 30 minutes, so they really worked hard at that. I appreciate what the staff has done. The kids enjoyed it, I think, built that stamina. We knew we had a lot of tired kids week one. The adults were tired also. Some of the other things we have, the activities at the high school, we have 260 high school students in an activity right now, 339 students total in our high school activities. We count our seven and eighth graders. We have a lot of kids out for fall activities, not just sports, drama starting up and things like that, so a lot of kids are participating in those things, so we're trying to get more kids involved in that area. Both Amanda, Amber, and Derek have done a nice job. They have our, our kids have a social media that they supervise and monitor. The kids post what's happening at activities, what you're going to dress up like. Our kids are being leaders. Derek started that Otter Leadership Academy. Couple of those kids are leading our students in those things. We also have the opportunity to support the Gold Rush for the kids when they come in and cheer on our activities when they're here at the school. We did offer opportunity for some of our tech kids, an opportunity for what's called Otter's Den, something we started. Kids are interested in technology, can help support the technology department. Obviously, homecoming is next week. The kids are excited. Royalty is out. We sent that out, and we have, the activities are being updated on a daily basis. Kids just found out what each day is for next week. I forgot to bring that with me. I'll share that with Mr. Drake. He can share it with you guys. The kids are excited. October 14th, we will have a career fair at the high school, so all 9 through 12th graders will be participating in that. Bring in local businesses to speak to some of the kids. Ninth graders find out what activities we have in the high school, so they can figure out what they might want to do as they move forward. And some of the things our seniors are getting ready for as they leave the building, they'll meet with business people that talk about life after high school, and our counselors are going to actually meet with all seniors that day and tell them all the things they need to do before they leave us and get completed for us. And we're going to ask them to fill out a three-page document on letters of recommendation and start handing those to adults, get them ready for their applications to college, work, or military after high school. Our juniors are going to learn how to interview and how to fill out applications and things like that. The ALC has updated their advisory. They do it at the end of the day now. Opportunity, a lot of social-emotional activities. Kristen implemented the same thing we did at the high school with that part. Summer school was, had a record number of students participate, 109. They earned 139.75 credits, so the kid worked hard this summer in those opportunities and recovered a number of credits. They use standards-based grading. They're using some of those things right now with some of the ESA things they're doing, that they're part of, making sure kids are getting the academic achievement they need over at the ALC. Eighth and ninth graders had the opportunity to come in this summer and get some little extra credit opportunities that were electives this summer through the ALC. 13 of those 14 kids who participated earned credits. The ALC classrooms were painted and murals were put up. Now they're excited about that. The classrooms look great. Carpet's on the floor. Students are really talking about and appreciate it. Later in October, they're going to go to the ropes course, key building activity. They're looking forward to that. They also are having their own court for homecoming, so they're voting on their own students over there and participating in our days also. At the IQ Academy, we have a new agriculture class that we're teaching. They also do social-emotional opportunities with their classes each month, and they do it in their homerooms once a month. They've done some of the same things we have. They're also working in connecting with students. They're calling parents to make sure if their son and daughter haven't logged in, they're connecting with them. They also are doing the Seven Mind Senses monthly themes. I'll give that information to you guys too. They're really working hard. Over the, I had the opportunity to meet with them. The first two days, they had their staff meetings here at the high school also. And they're working through standards of alignment in their K-12 classes. One of the teachers is actually starting an e-gaming group, so the kids online can get together and do some e-gaming together. They have to be 13 years or older to do it. The first month, I said, teachers talked, I reached out to make sure they're connecting with them. They did lose four people that worked with getting kids connected, doing truancy, working with them. Ryan's working really hard with K-12 to see if they can get some more support back to help out in that area. And he also put together a new academic formation letter that lets kids specifically know here at the high school, if they haven't done any work for two weeks, they're going to come back to us. It's really well-written. He did a nice job in that, and he's supported them really, really well here, sitting up in the media center for the first two and a half weeks, make sure they were in, and helped out and support them in their academic learning. Any questions for me?
Mark, what was the date on the career fair?
October 14th. As we finalize that, I'll send more to Mr. Drake. He can send out to the board members. We're finalizing the rotations and all that, all those wonderful things. The kids are in for a big treat.
Then on your ALC numbers, you had 621, and I think you said 7, right? I think you meant to say 27.
For which grade?
11th.
11th grade to 7, my fault.
Actually, I think it's 27, because you said it was that updated for.
Oh, yes, it is 27. I left the 2 off.
Okay, yeah, and then 30 for grade 12.
You're correct. I apologize.
No problem.
Nice density in your report.
Yeah.
It's great to have you connecting with the ALC and IQ and bringing some that forward.
Appreciate that.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Blake Stoltman, our finance director, or director, is going to give us a short report on a couple of topics that are.
It'll be short and sweet. I have some good news. Tax rate's going to be decreasing by 12 and a quarter, as of now, 12.25. It'll be the lowest since 1415, which was 26.51%. This year, it'll be 27.2. We are levying the maximum. And the biggest reasons for the decrease is, number one, we are estimating 100 pupil drop in students, which affects the referendum side. It's a local optional revenue, so when you see a drop in that much, you're going to see some change in that total. And it aligns with more with FY '21, so this is not surprising. The next big item will be the lease levy piece. A couple of years ago, the district had planned to do some remodeling at the Heritage Building that never materialized. That added up to about $200,000 in levy dollars that we actually, we levied and received, but it didn't, we never used. So essentially, the state is coming back and adjusting that on our levy. Other things along with the lease levy, also we saw a drop in the lease for the YMCA, and also we saw some adjustments to things such as like the community arena lease levy, where we paid actually less than what we levied, so essentially made the adjustment down on that as well. And also on, in the debt service area, we saw a drop of about $60,000 in interest payments, and that's just the nature of, as your principal decreases, you will continue to see less and less interest payment, and that's also carried over from years prior to when that adjustment, but that makes it up as a whole. So overall, we're going to see a tax decrease of 12 and a quarter at the maximum levy amount, and with that, I will take any questions we have.
I understand that the lease levy is a catch-up type situation, less every couple of years, and that's why, even though we did the Lincoln Building and decided not to heritage, that's why it didn't come until now, because it's a two-year true-up type thing.
Correct. It's a 2019 adjustment.
Yep.
So it's the least, the levy amount. So it's the lease, the levy amount that was created by the previous business manager was what was essentially corrected since that heritage project did not materialize at that point in time.
Right. Thank you.
Any other questions for Blake? All right, thank you, Blake. And now we'll have a report from our superintendent, Jeff Drake.
Good evening. I'm very happy to continue to report that we're up to a very, very good and strong school year. My appreciation goes out to all of my colleagues for their hard work and preparation to get off to such a positive start. And it has been really nice to see all the students back in the building, participating in activities, and all of our community members and parents coming into the school to enjoy a full experience so far this year. Otter Pride Night was a great success. And my thanks to all those that were involved with that. The three hundred pom-poms were gone within an hour. The food, the taco in a bag was sold out with about a half hour left in the event. That was sponsored by the Five Forty-Four Foundation. But families were in the Gold Gym, having a good time. And the positive energy just traveled right out onto the, into the football stadium for a beautiful evening of high school football afterwards. It was mentioned before, but we are on the cusp of our annual homecoming week, October fourth through the eighth. So my congratulations to the royalty and looking forward for a wonderful week with those students and enjoying some great school spirit. Our enrollment is strong. So I do have a comparison of some kind of longitudinal data on our enrollment. The figures here might differ a little bit from the ones earlier. Enrollment is always a fluctuating piece. So you're taking a snapshot from a particular date and things go up and down from there. But as you can see, on the brick and mortar side, I'm really happy that we're up a hundred students in our buildings from where we were a year ago. So that's very positive. We knew we had that enrollment drop and it was, we were a little unsure of what the bounce back might look like with that. But we're basically approaching our, on the brick and mortar side, where we were at, excuse me, pre-COVID. We did what I'm gonna say is an educated guess on kindergarten enrollment. There's always a little bit of science and conjecture there. We budgeted for a hundred and eighty-five kindergarten students, and we have a hundred and eighty-seven. So that makes me pretty happy at least, and it's really good news for our district. On the COVID-nineteen piece, we continue to monitor and post our cases on a daily basis. I get that information from Jen Cohores, our school nurse, between, usually about four o'clock in the afternoon. I did not post today's on the website, but we had four new cases today. That will bring us to twenty-four so far since the start of the school year. We do continue to strongly recommend in our schools that staff and students wear masks. And if we are able to, we are certainly willing to host a vaccine clinic at the point where the younger students, five-toe-eleven-year-olds, are approved for a vaccine. So we will work with Otter Tail County Public Health to bring that to the school district so it's accessible for those students and parents that choose to have that vaccine. That would be done only with parental approval. This evening, we'll receive a presentation on the condition of Lincoln, McKinley, Adams, and Roosevelt from ATSNR. This will include two parts. Part A is the facilities assessment, and that's an evaluation of the physical deficiencies in the buildings listed, including estimated costs to repair each of the components. And part B is what's called an educational adequacy analysis. And that compares the Minnesota Department of Education School Construction Guidelines and evaluates buildings and site capacity and evaluates suitability for the changing needs of twenty-first century future-ready learning environments. The Five Forty-Four Foundation is sponsoring a retired staff reunion coming up this weekend, the thirtieth. And thanks again to the generosity of the Five Forty-Four Foundation and the Fergus Falls community. All of the classroom wish lists have been fully sponsored this year. So it's just a wonderful gift to our classrooms by the Fergus Falls community. We have something new this year, but it really fits in with our goal of creating an inclusive and respectful environment for all people in our district. Unity Day, our first Unity Day will be coming up in October. And the Five Forty-Four Foundation is sponsoring t-shirts. It's an orange t-shirt with a slogan or graphic designed by students. And that will be sponsored by the foundation. And all of our staff members will be able to order one of those and be part of that Unity Day, sending a strong message to, I should say, the KSS staff members will be able to order one of those and sending a strong message that this is a school where all students are welcomed and we wanna have a caring and respectful environment. And then lastly, I do wanna touch on the strategic plan. It's been essentially two years in development. This is the first year of implementing some of the vision outlined in that strategic plan. Was mentioned earlier, the social emotional learning components, in particular, making absolutely sure that we are forming strong, caring relationships with each one of our students. On the twenty-first century learning side, we are embedding the ISTI standards. That will be the beginning of a three-year process for us, making sure that our students have the technology, knowledge, and ability to fully function both in modern living, but in meeting the workforce expectations of employers. And then also, the project-based learning aspect of it, which will be introduced this spring. But this is a pedagogy teaching practice that's going to instill in our students confidence, creative thinking, problem-solving, the ability to communicate effectively with one another, risk-taking as a way of learning, as you try different things and find out that they don't work, and you reassess and go back to the drawing board and try to make what you did before even better. They're just really, really good lifelong learning skills that are going to propel these students from a great experience here to meeting the expectations of employers out there in the working force. So with that, I will conclude my report. Unless there are any questions?
It doesn't appear there are any questions. Thank you. We'll move on to our general consent items and for consideration for approval in this segment of the meeting are the minutes from our September thirteenth regular board meeting, which will be distributed. And then we have several personnel maneuvers. And now I will turn to our HR director, your name, John P.
Good evening, everyone. Our personnel side has slowed down a bit, which is a good thing. But I do have some items here that I would recommend for board approval tonight. Under support staff hires, Kylene Johnson, new NAR supervisor at McKinley, and Jessica Avila-Halderson, ECFD preschool classroom aide over at Lincoln. Support staff resignations from Scott Samuelson, mechanical worker, along with Sharon Scott, food service here at Kennedy Secondary School. And then last, retirement of Amy Hopper, para educator at McKinley. And you noticed that Principal Scott Colbeck mentioned her in his report also. There'll be a resolution later on in our board agenda for Amy, too. Along with that, you'll also notice that our new business, we have a request for two additional special ed pair positions at Cleveland School. These are based on IEP needs for some newly enrolled students. And then to hire two paras to support those needs. And so I would request approval of these items.
All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
A second?
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion on these items? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. That is approved, and we'll move to new business where the first item is, where I seek motion for two additional special education para professional positions at Cleveland School, based on student enrollment. And the names of the two employees are listed there.
So moved.
All right. And a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Next, we will have an information, we're looking for a proposal to have a public informational meeting regarding proposed property taxes and budgets and the final property tax levy, which is scheduled for six PM on Monday, December thirteenth, here in the Otter Community Room ahead of our December thirteenth meeting. And so we need a motion then to set that meeting?
We do.
All right. So would someone move to make a proposed levy for a taxes payable meeting as described?
It's kind of two. It's both setting our taxes payable at 2022 and then along with a public meeting that supports that.
Okay. Very well.
I'll make that motion.
And is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just to verify, we're setting it at the maximum right now.
Yes.
Just stated out of the minutes.
Yep.
Okay. Very well. Any other discussion?
This is an annual thing that we do. And every year, we set this, it's a public meeting.
Right. And every year, we don't get anyone to come. So if you would like to come to that meeting, that would be great. All right, thanks. All right, any other discussion? All in favor of approving the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, thank you. We had in our board packet, a list of fundraiser requests, and I would entertain a motion to approve those fundraisers.
So moved.
All right. And a second?
I'll second.
All right. So it was you on motion, Matt?
Yep.
And did anyone have any comments or questions or feedback on the fundraisers? All right. All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. We also received the proposed changes for that 2021, 2022 IQ, otherwise to be known as Stride Academy, Parent-Student Handbook. I would entertain a motion to approve those changes in the handbook. So moved. And a second?
I'll second that.
And does anyone have any questions or discussion on the handbook changes? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, thank you. And now we will have before us a resolution for the designation of an identified official with authority over education, identity, and access management. The Minnesota Department of Education Professional Educator Licensing Standards Board and the Office of Higher Education require annual designation of an identified official with authority, which we call an Iowa, for each local educational agency that uses the Education, Identity, and Access Management System. Iowa is responsible for authorizing, reviewing, and recertifying user access for their local educational agency in accordance with Minnesota State Enterprise Systems and must, oops, accordance with Minnesota Enterprise Identity and Access Management Standard, which states that all user access rights to a Minnesota state system must be reviewed and recertified at least annually. The Iowa will authorize user access to the state of Minnesota education secure systems in accordance with the user's assigned job duties and will revoke that user's access when it is no longer needed to perform their job duties. The Fergus Falls School Board designates Jeff Drake as an Iowa to authorize user access to the state of Minnesota education secure websites for Fergus Falls Public School District, Five Forty-Four. I will offer that resolution. And for its adoption, will someone second?
Second.
All right. And does anyone have any questions? I would just note for visitors that, that was a lot of words to say that it's a secure database. They don't want one of us using it. Jeff Drake's our guy. The end. Any other discussion?
Natalie Knutson?
Yes.
Melanie Cole?
Yes.
Matthew Lemke?
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Steven Vigasa?
Yes.
Kirby Anderson?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
All right. Thank you. We have an amendment to the arena agreement fee structure between the city of Fergus Falls and Independent School District, number Five Forty-Four. This is for fiscal year twenty-two. Would someone make a motion to endorse that adjustment to the fee structure?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
All right. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. And we'll keep moving. We have several school board policies that have been revised. And I would seek a motion to approve revisions to policy number one oh two, number four oh six, number four thirteen, policy number four twenty-five, number five oh one, number five fifteen, and number five twenty-four. Would someone offer a motion to approve the revisions to those policies?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. And a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. And being that you are on that policy committee, Missy, would you just give a short highlight about what was changed, added, or subtracted?
On some of them, it was simply some wording. For example, the, let's see, on harassment and violence, there was simply some changes of wording. On school weapons, flammable liquids was added to that list. Some of it was updating, like the internet and adding of different applications that we don't want people using at school. And just keeping public and private personnel data that's going to include people that apply for a job, applicants, their data is there. And then, let's see, that's, that's just that very short...
Summary?
Yes.
Thank you. And for anyone interested in the nature of the policies we're revising, or any of the board policies are on our website, the school board, or the school website. So any other comments or questions about those revisions?
That's just a few. A few of many to cover. We have stacks, please.
All right. Right. All right, right. MSBA-driven, yeah.
Many of them are, yeah.
Yep.
And then some of them are, we're required to review them every year anyway, as a school district, and then some of them just, for example, the internet acceptable use, you know, sometimes that is, things come up.
Yeah, quickly changing. All right. All in favor of approving the revisions to those policies, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, well then that brings us to our final bit of activity here this evening, and it's a resolution on the retirement of Amy Hopper, whereas Amy Hopper began her employment with Fergus Falls Public Schools in August two thousand and fifteen, and whereas Amy's been a valued employee with Fergus Falls Public Schools for five years, and whereas Amy has been a dedicated para educator for the district, and now therefore be it resolved by the Fergus Falls School Board to thank Amy Hopper for her five years of service to Fergus Falls Public Schools. Would someone offer that resolution and move for its adoption?
I'll offer that resolution and move for its adoption.
I'll second that.
Very well. Any discussion? Hearing none, clerk please take your role.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lemke.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Steven Vigasa.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. That concludes our business segment of tonight's meeting. We will have our next regular board meeting here on October eleventh at Five Fifteen, and tonight, we will go proceed to the auditorium, where we'll have a presentation from an architectural firm about our facilities, and continue to expand our range. All right, with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'm second.
I'll second.
All right, all in favor of adjournings, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. All right, we are adjourned, thank you.